Welcome to the City of Malala Planning Commission for October 15th, 2025. I'll call a meeting to order, and if you join me in the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is roll call. Guess we'll begin with Mr. Zinder.
Planning Manager Dan Zinder, present.
Associate Planner Clarissa Davis, present.
Commissioner Potts, present.
Commissioner Ricky, present.
Commissioner Ansel, present.
Commissioner Eagleberry, present.
Commissioner Sharp, present.
Commissioner O'Nellis, present.
Engineering Section Manager Sam Miller, present.
Assistant City Manager Matt Cortheil, present.
Community Development Technician Justin Worth, present.
Up next is our consent agenda. We need to have a consent agenda for approving the minutes from September 3rd, 2025. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Ms. Worth, will you please call?
Commissioner Ansel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Nellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ricky?
Aye.
Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
Chairman Eagleberry?
Aye.
Thank you, the vote passes six, zero, zero.
All right. Next up is public comment. Now is the time to receive public comment on items not listed on the agenda. Citizens are allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city, but not listed as an item on the agenda. Prior to speaking, citizens shall complete the comment form and deliver it to the support staff. The planning commission does not generally engage in dialogue with those making comments, but may refer the issue to the community development director. Complaints shall first be addressed at the department level prior to addressing the planning commission. Do we have any public comment? Okay, moving on. We are now moving into our public hearings. Now is the time set for public hearings to consider a quasi judicial land use application. The application SDR 02-2025 and variances is for the site design review for a new middle school building at 318 Leroy Avenue. Now we will proceed with the quasi judicial land use public hearing, starting with an introduction to the procedures for the hearing. I will introduce the applicable substantive criteria upon which each case will be decided. Our senior planner Dan Zinder will provide a staff report. When the staff report has been presented, I will open the public hearing to public testimony. Members of the public who want to testify are asked to sign in and indicate that they will testify on the sign in sheet. Come up to the podium when called and give their name, address, and city of residence for the record before they testify. We are asking for your address so we can notify you of the city's final decision. If you have any written testimony or other evidence to submit, please give that to the staff so it can be entered into the record. When public testimony has been concluded, I will close the public hearing and open planning commission discussion and deliberation. After the commission has deliberated, we will need a motion to approve, modify, or deny the application. Are there any questions among the commission about the process? Saying none. Oregon land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of a quasi judicial public hearing. First, conflicts of interest, ex parte contact bias. The commission is required to disclose any conflicts of interest and ex parte contacts that we may have with the land use application or applicant. This is whether we have any financial or other personal interest in a proposal, whether we have spoken with anybody, or have other information about a proposal gathered outside of this hearing. Also commissioners may only participate if they can do so without undue bias, either for or against an application. Do any commissioners wish to make any disclosures? No. All right. Are there any challenges from the audience as to conflicts of interest, ex parte contact, or bias related to any member of the commission? Required statements. The applicable procedural substantive criteria upon which SDR 02-2025 and variances will be decided are found in Malala municipal code sections in Division 2 and the Development and Design Standards of Division 3. Specific approval criteria can be found in the notice of hearing for proposed development, which was provided as public notice to interested parties and property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. Your testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply per ORS 197.763 Paragraph 5B. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond may preclude appeal of a decision on this application based on that issue per ORS 197.763 Paragraph 5C. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court per ORS 197.796 Paragraph 3B. I now open the public hearing for application SDR 02-2025 and variances at 6:37 PM. I now call on Senior Planner Dan Zinder to present a staff report for the first application or for the application.
All right. Well, Planning Manager Dan Zinder to report on, present the staff report on design review SDR 02-2025 and associated variances DAR 01, 02, 03, and 04-2025 at 318 Leroy Ave for the new Malala Middle School. With this presentation, staff submits the written staff report exhibits into the meeting record. I included this slide, it was up a minute ago, in case folks want to, you know, follow along or have the staff report. It's a massive report, and for that reason, we didn't print one out as we often do with many sized pages. Online access will be an easier way to see that. So, application overview for site design review for 318 Leroy Ave for new middle school. The applicant's owners seek to establish land use approvals for a new middle school addressed at 318 Leroy Ave. The existing school on the site will be demolished. Quick overview of the variances, I'll go over these in a little more detail at a later point in the presentation, but they submitted four variances for concurrent review. VAR 01 and VAR 02-2025 modify the required window glazing on street facing and non-street facing facades respectively. VAR 03-2025 modifies articulation requirements that require a break every 30 feet of at least 24 inches. And a VAR 04-2025 modifies maximum onsite light fixture height from 20 to 25 feet for the proposal. For some procedural thing, slides, SDR 225 and its concurrent variances were submitted on May 30th. They were deemed incomplete on June 25th, meeting the 30 day timeline in accordance with Section 17-4.2.040 of Malala Municipal Code. And the applicant resubmitted on July 31st, 2025, and the application was deemed complete that day. So we met, just a slide saying we met all our noticing requirements from the code. We mailed it out on September 17th, posted it on the web the same day, the notice, and posted on the property. We've got affidavit that it was posted on the 30th of September by the applicant, and it was posted on the Pioneer on September 24th. So these all meet the 14 day requirements respectively for these, for type 3 procedure. And the city received no written public comment on the application. Approval criteria for site design review, it's from the Malala Municipal Code, Section 17-4.2.050 for site design review, approval criteria, and for variances 17-4.7.040B. Site showing location, it's the outline in purple there, right in the center. Site is surrounded by, on all sides by right of way, Lynn Lane to the north, Leroy Ave to the south, West Lane, or sorry, Leroy Ave to the east, West Lane to the south, and North Hezzi Lane to the west, and then Tolliver Road north of that, and Oregon 211, West Main south of that. So those are sort of the bounding streets and major roads nearby. For surrounding zoning and land use, the north and east sides of the school are surrounded by single family residential zone properties primarily. There is a mobile home park sort of to the northeast. To the south, it's a mixture of residential and commercial uses. There's a clinic right on sort of southwest side, and then some residential uses and grocery stores. And then the Malala Elementary School to the northeast and some more single family residential uses to the southeast, or southwest, northwest and southwest. I wanted to have a slide for existing conditions, just to show, mostly to show the location of the current school versus where they're building it. It's in the southeast corner of the property. And then the surrounding right of way around it. Item, item number one up here in the, on the northwest corner of the property shows the existing right of ways for North Hezzi Lane and Lynn Lane, sort of this triangular section here. This section highlighting, there's a subdivision right in here that was approved, and improvements on this road are tied to that subdivision in here. There's another section between Lynn Lane and North Hezzi Lane, of North Hezzi Lane, that is currently between the middle school and the elementary school that's undeveloped. There's a section three here of North Hezzi Lane between North Valley Drive and West Lane that currently is, has, I believe, half-street improvements on it. And then West Lane is number five, I'm a little out of order here, but number five, West Lane is partially developed street with two travel lanes, and then Lynn Lane above is substantially undeveloped with a, with a storm swale, an open storm swale going along the length of it. And then that last Leroy, Leroy Ave, it's a major collector on the east side of the facility, and it is three quarters developed, and there are not, there are missing sidewalks on the opposite side of the street, and all these right of ways are substandard in various ways, so. Okay, for the, for the site plan, so the, first of all, the building moves from that, from the southeast to the northeast corner of the property. There's a proposed storm detention pond for onsite storm detention in the northwest corner of the property. Employee access is coming from Lynn Lane. Visitor parking and pickup and drop off access is coming from Leroy Ave. So, you know, they'll come in here, they'll go, it'll come around for pickup and drop off, and then there's some visitor parking in here, and over here. Bus access, athletic fields and event parking access from North Hezzi Lane. So there's event parking here, and then this bus lane in where they can turn around and drop the students off. Multiple locations for bike parking from the Hezzi Lane access and from the Leroy Ave access, and then new athletic fields to the west and south of the building. The applicant submitted transportation impact analysis, that among other things performed nine warrant analysis at intersections of interest, including Leroy Ave, or the, and Oregon 211, and it says traffic situations are adjacent to the site and important intersections near the site. Leroy Ave, of course, and Oregon 211 is one that's been of interest to the community and the, and the commission and the council, and so providing special attention for how we address it here. The city requested additional analysis for that intersection that the applicant performed in September, and that was provided with Exhibit C of the staff report. And so we wanted an additional submission for this to account for school day pedestrian traffic and full occupancy of the apartments across 211. So basically to get the current condition of that intersection, and with that supplemental analysis, signal warrants were still not met. So a little more explanation on the variances. So variance 01 and variance 02-2025 are for window glazing. 01 was submitted for the street facing elevations where 60% glazing is required, and basically there's this window plane that's like between 30 inches and 72 inches from street grade, and you just sort of look, you look across there and you say how much of that plane, that line is covered with windows. And so same standard for non-street elevations, but it's a lower requirement. So we could, we were, for this application, we were considering the frontages along, facades along Lynn Lane and Leroy Ave as street facing, and the ones where the fields were between the building and the street along Hezzi and West to be non-street facing. So the applicant proposed a standard less than that, 38% along Lynn Lane and 36% along Leroy Ave, and then a 21% window coverage for non-street facing along the southern elevation. And the primary concerns stated by the applicant were security in assembly spaces and building Windows are provided in each classroom, but not for facilities such as the gym and auditorium. And so the, I also want to, so the, this first elevation shows the Leroy Ave elevation, and you know, it's along sort of this window plane here, you're measuring 36% window glazing along Lynn Lane, 38%, and for the south elevation, a 21%. So I wanted to show what those, what those facades looked like with the, with the reduction. For variance 03, it's articulation, and the standard for articulation is that there's a break that's a minimum 24 inches in depth and occurs at least 30 feet along, at least every 30 feet long street facing building elevation. So it's, you know, you'll have 30 feet and then a break, you know, something that's different from what you've seen, and then 30 on average. So the elevation facing Leroy Ave has an average break every 56 feet, so it does, so that would not meet, you know, it would not meet the standard as written in the code, but we found that for variance 01, 02, and 03, the applicable criteria were met. One of the major considerations is that our code, our code is mostly designed to consider like downtown storefront type development. It was something that we addressed in the, with our consultants and with the, with the commission and council in our economic opportunities analysis, that our non-residential building and design standards really didn't address buildings that didn't fall under that, that, those criteria and considered, and have sort of more robust considerations for industrial, for public, for public facilities, and basically anything that's not sort of your downtown retail storefront. And, and for that, and having adopted that into the comprehensive plan, we found that there was, you know, a consideration that wasn't met by the code, and that the variances met for that, for that reason. So, and here's, this is showing the portion of the Leroy Ave elevation that doesn't meet. I believe that's for the music, that correspond with the music facility and auditorium. So the last variance 04 is for light fixture height. The standard for light fixture height is 20 feet. The applicant proposes 25 foot tall light fixtures in the parking circulation. The applicant submitted a lighting plan that showed that it otherwise met code provisions, that notably the light distribution standards, you know, how light one area is versus another area are drastically contrasting, that they met the overall brightness standards of the code, and that light spillage wasn't, they were, that they were directed so that there wasn't light spillage onto adjacent properties. So some, some of the more substantial highlights from the conditions of approval, not sort of the boilerplate ones that we provide in most applications. So for frontage improvements, they're required for each frontage of the site to upgrade substandard right of way. Full width improvements are required on Leroy Ave that basically, that basically amounts to upgrading the, making intersection improvements, sidewalks on the east side of the street, three fifth, three quarter width improvements on Lynn Lane and West Lane. So basically your sidewalk adjacent to the building and then building out the street to current standards up to the opposite curb, and then half-street improvements on North Hezzi Lane to match the half that's already been built with the subdivision. So then also, also intersection improvements at Tolliver Leroy Ave to bring crosswalks into compliance with ADA standards. And a couple footnotes on that. So there's a western portion of Lynn Lane, and I might go back to this number one here. And that, again, that's tied to the Hezzi Lane Leesa State subdivision. And so that's, that wasn't included in our, in our conditions. And then there's a swap for a portion of North Hezzi Lane between North Valley Drive and Lynn Lane, subject to a land swap, which I'll get to in another, on another slide. And I should also And I should also, I should also mention that sidewalk construction is required for the east side of Leroy Ave between Lynn Lane and Tolliver Road. So the, so for the Leroy Ave and Oregon 2, 211, again, the applicant submitted a full nine-warrant signal analysis for that intersection during normal school hours, this past, from this past September, I think, I believe it was September, September 15th, and it was included a supplemental report in Exhibit C. So basically, the, the condition is if the analysis doesn't meet the threshold for signal construction, and, and the warrant analysis showed that it, it did not, the applicant would pay a proportionate share of cost based on the following equation, or an alternative equation agreed to by the city and the applicant's traffic consultant at the time of construction. So that would basically be your trip generation of the development, how many trips that, that generates a drop-off and pick-up time, divided by the total trips through the intersection at that time, and times the cost estimate for the signal. On the point of the land swap, the city and school district entered a purchase and sale agreement to swap the two properties shown below. So the, the city would be gaining a portion of this property between East Fifth Street and South Moll Ave, that's currently the site of Fox Park, and this, the, the school district, the, the school district would gain North Hezzi Lane between Lynn Lane and North Valley Drive. So the construction, the construction of North Hezzi Lane would not, between those two roads would not be required if the landslide is completed. And the current condition recommend, the current condition recommends North Hezzi Lane to be built or bonded prior to building permit or landslide to be completed. So staff has recommended shifting the timing of this condition to prior to occupancy. So that's, that's part of our recommendation. For water and sewer utilities, Lynn Lane has an undersized waterline. If fire looping is required throughout the site, the applicant will need to upsize the line at Lynn Lane to eight feet, or eight, eight inches, these should be inches.
That's a big pipe.
Yeah, surprise, guys. No, those should be inches. So the applicant would need to upsize to accommodate the fire looping. For stormwater, there's substantial points for that, or the applicant, this underground existing underwater storm ditch in Lynn Lane on the south side of Lynn Lane, so that, that gets piped. They're gonna have to get their joint removal fill for, from DSL and the Army Corps of Engineers prior to construction. There's a, there's a small wetland area in the northwest corner, so that they'll need a removal fill permit for that. And it's the proposed site of the stormwater detention pond, which is a compatible use in our, in our wetlands code as well. So, and then bring existing facilities for catchment, and, and that's in the right-of-way years, your catch basins and whatnot, to, to standard. So some, some storm infrastructure in the right-of-way. So to conclude, a staff's recommendation is based on the findings and conclusions in the Exhibits A and B of the submitted staff report. Staff hereby recommend that the planning commission approve the applicant's proposed site design review, City File SDR 02-2025, and the associated variance, City Files VAR 01, 02, 03, and 04-2025, subject to the conditions of approval found in Title III of the staff report and the modification to the recommended condition adjusting timing of North Hezzi Lane construction. And so concludes staff report.
Next, all people speaking before the planning commission must state their name and address for the record. Is there any written public comment for the record?
No written public comment.
Okay. And now invite the applicant to present their case.
Good evening, my name is Mercedes Sarah, I'm the owner of 3J Consulting, representing the district tonight. On our proposal for a new middle school, the district is proposing to replace the existing 91,000 square foot middle school building with a new 115,000 square foot building on the same site. We are seeking approval of the site design review application and for variances for the project. We'd like to thank staff for the staff report and presentation, and we'd like to thank you all for being here this evening. We have a brief presentation to give, and then we'll be answering questions when we have. Excellent. Oh, the school site is a zone public facility, which allows schools to outride. The existing building has access primarily from Leroy Avenue and secondary access from West Lane to the south. The school currently shares athletic facilities with the neighboring elementary school and after-hours programs. New middle school will be constructed while the school is still being used and in operation. So it'll be constructed on the north half of the site while the school remains working. The proposed design will have primarily, the primary building entrance off of Leroy with current pickup and drop-off located there. The driveway will include both right and left-hand turn lanes, as well as new improvements to Leroy will include a center turn lane to allow for vehicles entering and leaving the site to have better movement in and out of the site without blocking traffic. School buses will access the site from Hezzi Lane and drop off at the southern entrance to the building. The southern parking lot will provide additional parking for the school, as well as after-hours activities on the fields. Staff parking will be provided from Lynn Lane to the north, and pedestrian pathways will connect to all of the right-ways, as well as the shared elementary school track The building's been oriented with the two-story classroom wing to the north, where the building is closest to the neighboring residential properties, and the gymnasium, auditorium, and athletic fields to the south with the designated parking lot. The reorientation gives special consideration to the impact on the neighborhood. After-hours and weekend activities on the school property will primarily occur at the south end where there is a greater distance from neighboring properties to account for sound. On-street and onsite parking will provide for more efficient use of the site as well during special events. Building elevations have been designed with a mix of brick, fiberglass paneling, and metal paneling. Accent details include concrete, wood, blue-lan beams, and curtain wall window systems. The form detailing, massing, textures, and colors are complementary and consistent throughout the building and consistent with the school use. There'll be 156 onsite parking stalls, as well as new on-street parking stalls on West, Lynn, and Hezzi Lane. There'll be 35 additional spaces in the bus loop for after-hours as well. The middle school currently utilizes Leroy Avenue for bus pickup and drop-off. The new school configuration will provide onsite queuing for the buses, which will provide a more safe environment for pedestrians and cars along Leroy Avenue, and move idling buses away from the adjacent residential neighborhood. Dan gave a pretty good account of all the public improvements. I'll just touch on, we'll be improving Leroy Avenue, including sidewalks, bikes, bike lanes, travel lanes, center turn lane at the entrance, curb and gutter. Lynn Avenue will include three-quarter-street improvements, and then that will tie into the improvement from the subdivision to the west. West Avenue will be a three-quarter-street, and then Hezzi Lane, given the vacation, there will be an improvement along the existing up to the driveway where the bus, buses will enter the site. New school building will not increase any enrollment in the school or capacity beyond what the existing school has. The traffic report incorporates a modest increase in enrollment over time. The new building won't trigger the warrant for the traffic signal at Main, as no new trips are being generated by the development. All intersections operate within the level of service standards. The mode split for vehicle traffic shows about 45% of students ride by car in the morning peak, and only 32% are leaving by car in the afternoon peak. We see this change in primarily walking and biking students in the afternoon, walk and bike leaving the school, so higher traffic in the morning, less traffic in the afternoon PM. Bus ridership is fairly consistent in morning and evening. As part of the application, we're requesting four variances relating to the design of the site and building. The first variance requested is the requirement for 60% transparency between the building base and a plane 72 inches above the sidewalk on street-facing facades. The street-facing facade on Lynn to the north and Leroy to the east, proposed transparency for Lynn is 38%, and Leroy is 36%. The variance requested for the requirement, second variance requested is for the requirement of 30% transparency on side and rear elevations. We are proposing a 10% transparency on the south facade and a 21% on the west facade. The storefront window and glazing requirements are generally more appropriate in a commercial or civic, civil use that, that is not incorporate the programmatic needs of the school. Window placement has been carefully considered with regards for both safety and security of the students, as well as the structural design of the school and the programmatic elements within the school. These include gymna, the gymnasium and the auditorium, which don't generally have windows on the lower level, as well as some structural members highlighted in yellow that, that provide some structural strength there with no windows. The third variance is the articulation requirement for every 30 feet of facade, a depth of 24 inches of articulation. The facade on Lynn has an articu, too, articulation that varies between 7 and 35 feet with an average of 23 feet, whereas on Leroy, it's 10 to 139 with an average of 56, and that accounts for those larger auditorium spaces. Facade on Leroy, the distance between the articulation is generally to provide interior classroom spaces, administrative areas, building entry, and the auditorium. Facades have been designed to incorporate plane changes, material changes, and relief to provide visual interest beyond the articulation standards. So this is the front facade. This is the north-facing facade, and then this is this, and the next one's the south-facing facade where the bus loop is. And then the final variance, as mentioned, is for the onsite lighting within the parking areas around the school for safety and weight funding. Lights have been designed to prevent light trespass on adjacent properties, and dark-skay fixtures haven't utilized for applicable. The proposed parking lot lighting, the maximum height of 25 feet, will allow for fewer light poles, which will reduce visual impact, provide better light distribution for safety, and lower the maintenance needs for the schools. As mentioned, we've discussed Condition 2E6 with staff and are requesting to revise the condition to say, prior to occupancy rather than par, prior to building permit authorization for the land swap negotiation for Hezzi Lane. Finally, this site, site plan here, just to take a look. I'd be happy to answer any questions, there's members of the sign team here can provide any more detail than.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
Yeah, thank you so much. Does anybody have any cursory questions?
I got a handful of them. So, as far as the glazing concerns, what is the safety concerns to adding the more windows, our fake windows to meet our standards?
So generally, in classroom spaces, there are areas of the classroom where you don't want the school to be visible from the outside for student safety, so there are areas where students might need to be located where they are not visible from the outside of the building, so that's one of the main safety concerns in a classroom space. Auditorium and gymnasium and the music hall, it's more generally programmatic. For those spaces, you don't generally have windows at the lower level in an auditorium or a gymnasium, just for basic use of those rooms.
So, my understanding, this is a commercial building, as far as I'm concerned. I know it's a PSP, it's public, semi-public building, but at the end of the day, this is a commercial building, I think needs to meet our commercial standards, which brings up the fake window facades potentially to meet our 30, our 60% standards to get us there, regardless of school or commercial building itself. One of the concerns I had was that, and then the light pole situation going to 25 feet, I think is gonna be a problem with the light display that I put into my own personal bluebeam as the spread of those lights. Technically, there's three lights on your light design that aren't listed on the light call-out, so I don't know what those are being, what the floodlight is for those. Those are gonna be the, the three at the, the numbers E1 and E-1-5, there's no listing for that schedule.
Okay.
So, just, those are just my concerns, talking to you, trying to figure this out, you know, to allow these variances to happen.
So for the fake windows, I'll do my best to address that, that's really more of a design, architect, design question, but generally speaking, adding the fake windows is not something that the school district would prefer, as they like to provide a mix of materials that really work in harmony with each other, and then having 60% of the glazing occur that isn't really useful, isn't generally what the district would prefer on the design of the building. The, sorry, I'm just trying. E1-5 lighting, I think I may have to defer to our civil engineer and ask what that lighting schedule is meant to be. The general design of the, the lighting plan shows that there is no light trespass or spillage off of the property beyond what's allowed in the code, but I'd have to take a look at what the specific, like, three light fixtures we are talking about are.
At the 25-foot poles or 20-foot poles?
At the 25-foot poles.
Hmm. I came up with something different, with light spillage at 25-foot poles according to these lights that are facing Lynn Avenue. That's the only question I have, because of those neigh, because of those houses right there. 25-foot poles flooded right into their front yard, where 20-foot poles don't, so.
It's my understanding we provided a photometric with the 25-foot poles?
I couldn't find it anywhere within the report, so.
Okay. We would be happy to provide, as a condition, a photometric plan showing that there's no spillage on neighboring properties, if that's possible.
I don't know, I mean, we're, we're at this point now, I mean, these are just questions, concerns, I get this, but these are pretty big, you know what I'm saying? And then, another thing I had, back to the glazing, I know these are proposed drafts and stuff, but the glazing, or the elevations don't match the floor plans that were submitted to us, which I had a hard time calculating the glazing on my own because they don't match the floor plan. So, I know we're here for land use and not building, but I just wanted to bring that out there, that, I mean, they need to match eventually.
Sure, and as they're moving through design, the floor plans are sort of subject to change.
Exactly.
We included them to kind of give an idea of what the interior spaces are, but those are definitely going to be.
Which brings me back to the fake windows, because how do you know where you can and can't put windows if you don't have a dedicated floor plan yet?
Right, and there, I mean, the general design of the floor plan is, is pretty far along at this point, so there is a good idea of where the windows can and can or would like to be, you know, windows in each classroom, windows generally are provided on higher, higher in the building, but not at that lower level, street level as much, just based on what the uses are in those spaces.
I got nothing else, I mean, I've said my piece, I mean, you guys, this is a commercial building, it's gonna be built as a commercial building with a brick facade. There's easy ways to put fake glass in brick facades, that's all I'm trying to say.
I will just point out, there is, that slide that highlights those sheer walls, that is a structural element where. is a structural element where we have those planes identified on purpose for structural support, so those would be areas where they wouldn't necessarily want to provide fake glazing instead of the.
It's a center block build with brick facade?
Sure, I, I mean, I.
All right. Are you talking, you're talking about?
This, yeah, those are structural elements, and then they kind of provide a design connection between the upper and lower floors of the building as well.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? I don't know, I think we're good for now. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, I invite those in support of the application to speak. I invite those opposed to the application to speak.
Somebody back there, please.
I'm sorry?
Right there.
Hi, my name is Lynn Metz, I live at 413 Leroy, front and center of that building. My biggest concern at this point is the night lighting, as you are questioning, as well as what kind of lighting is going to be coming from those windows through the night, as well as the, I love Malala Communications, excellent company, as well as what kind of lighting that's going to be putting on the public main street there.
Are you speaking of the signage?
Yes, yeah, so it's just the night lighting, very sensitive to that, from bird migration, as well as that I'm directly across the street. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that, well, we're currently at the, those opposed to the application I invite those who are neither for nor against the application to speak. I invite any public agencies to comment. I invite the applicant to present any rebuttal to the testimony presented.
All right, thank you, Ms. Metz, for your comments. Relating to the lighting coming from the windows at night, the building will have lighting on a timer that turns off in the evening, so there shouldn't be any lighting coming from the windows that would hopefully, wouldn't impact the neighbors across the street. The signage, lighting, I don't know that the district has worked out completely what they're going to do with that existing sign, I don't know.
Right now, the plan is to replace that sign with a smaller leaderboard and internally a new top leader. Will that be when the entrance, the drive entrance? Because that's like my, my living.
It would slightly to the south without it would be.
Towards which?
Uh, towards west.
Towards west. I'm just very concerned about, thank you for bringing my attention, and it sounds like they're doing something to it. I wouldn't really close my eyes at all.
All right.
I'll, I'll add, that our sign code does have a light flooding standard in it that the current sign more than likely does not meet, and so, you know, as far as light protruding into the, into the right-of-way, that's actually something that's prohibited by our sign code for, for illuminated signs, and I don't think it was applied appropriately at the time when that's submitted, or it pre-existed the existing code, because that one certainly does cast light onto the street, as you know, so we will be looking at that when they submit for their signage plan and ensuring that the light doesn't flood onto the street if that provides any solace.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, to follow up from that, there's a, there's a maximum illumination standard as well, 0.2-foot candles, which is, I mean, you know, dim is subjective, but it's definitely dimmer than the light that's out there. That's, that's objective.
And just to finally, on the final point, just light coming from the site, there are no, there's no uplighting that would be casting towards the neighbor's houses that would be impacted just from the site lighting, it's all downcast lighting, and not something that should be visible, and it would meet the city standards for lighting at the property line.
All right, thank you. Well, I close, I now close the public hearing for application, SDR 02-2025, and variances at 7:19 PM. Is there a request to keep the record open? Seeing none, now is the time for commission deliberation and discussion. Note, only questions asked of staff are allowed after the hearing has been closed. So it's our turn to talk amongst ourselves. So, is there any other, you have any, Martin?
I do not.
Okay. Comment?
Just, you know, I think you had a good point about it being a commercial building, but I think the kids' safety is first, and so, I think the kids come first, so no more windows.
But what is the?
About the fake windows, how that works.
But what is the advantage of safety when it becomes a laminated piece of glass for kid's safety? It's not, it's not a standard piece of glass, is what I'm trying to say, it's laminated glass, because it's a commercial building, it's two panes.
So wouldn't, people couldn't see in it?
They could see in it, but that's not going to be.
Well, I think that's what she was saying, it's a safety so the kids have places that they can't visualize.
Yeah.
It's a school, not a really commercial building.
Well, that's, that's what the predicament we're in, because we don't have a school code, neither does the state of Oregon have a school code, you know what I'm saying? So it's, it falls under the Oregon specialty code, not any other code, so, which also follows the commercial code lines. So, if you guys want to get into that, I mean, this is what I do, so, I know. So, there's that. Does anybody else have anything?
Among that, is there, is there any particular reason other than it's just the code, why you think they should have that?
So here's my thing, so we have all these variances, right? I'm looking at this as, A, they're a commercial contractor coming in here to our town to build a commercial project. We grant all these variances, that's going to give somebody else coming in behind them going, hey, you granted these variances to these guys, I want them too.
Yeah, we've set the precedent.
We haven't, exactly, if we allow these to happen, they're just going to get stepped on and stepped on and stepped on, next thing you know, we're not going to have any code standards left for our city. Hence the reason of the 25-foot poles, I am totally against that, they will be the tallest poles in town besides telephone poles.
I kind of wondered about that, I thought that one was a good one, I think that seems really tall.
And I put all these lights, this, into my Blue Beam software, the light spread is tremendous, 25 feet versus 20 feet. I think 20 feet is tall enough, they put in a few more poles to get their light coverage instead of 25 feet.
Is that why they're doing it?
Correct, to save money.
I think I agree with you on that one.
So, so on the, so on the, on the lighting, would you, would you be okay with approving it if there was conditions surrounding that?
At 20 foot tall, the meter goes.
Or at least, what about an analysis at the, at the very least, maybe they are correct?
They're not.
They're not, okay.
That's just my opinion. My opinion.
All right, fair enough.
So, so Dan, can I get a, I don't know how to quote it, so I'm just going to say, so, can I get more of a clarification, or maybe the thought process behind variances on this versus a future application for someone else that might be in a commercial sense? Do you want to?
Yeah, I got to handle this.
Mac, it's been a morning.
I think it's important to note that you guys' decisions on these quasi-dedicial areas are serious, do not have presidential value. There, it's based on a raw reading of the code and the conditions of approval that are presented for each action, and you don't have to grant that in the future unless you think it meets the code language and you decide that that's okay to do. There's also differentiation between the type of project that you could, you know, lean on if that doesn't make you comfortable for whatever that was. So, you know, you don't have to worry about setting precedent by approving variances. So that's one thing I think is important. Procedurally, what I would recommend is that you guys vote on the variances individually to start out, and that way, if a variance does fail for some reason, if you guys determine that that variance doesn't, then we can, instead of having to deny the entire proposal, because now it's got a variance in it that failed, you guys can condition it to meet that. So for instance, with the light poles, just as an example, I'm not saying you're going to deny it, not, not weighing in on whether you should or not, but if you guys decided, hey, we want those things to meet the code standard, and you're voting on that variance, you'd say, hey, we're going to deny this variance, and we're going to provide a, you know, a condition of approval that they need to submit a photometric plan and lighting plan that shows that they're within the city standard. Or you could approve it and say, hey, we want a photometric plan that proves that, other than the height, this meets all other city standards. So that's just a couple of examples for you, and I think the reason that we do the variances first is because again, if the variances aren't approved and it's as applied for in the site design review, then that would mean that it's automatically not meeting that section of the code, so you'd want to provide a condition if you intend to approve the full application, and I think that we'll be able to flesh that out through your variance votes, but, and I wasn't what you were asking, but I wanted to get that procedural element out there to you guys while I have a chance.
What was your question for Mac?
Question was whether, the variances are case-by-case.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
So clearly, based on this response, we're not. So we look at a future application potentially, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah, absolutely.
A future, a future application would be, would be evaluated on its own merits.
Absolutely.
Did the city have any findings on the light to address Clint's concern?
Um, I would have to defer to Mr. Metz.
Okay. Finding, yeah, findings were that the, the application showed that the, the other standards weren't met, were violated through the, through the extent, through the taller poles? So, yeah, yeah, that was the finding, is that.
Okay.
Other, other lighting standards weren't, weren't.
Just to flesh that out, one of the conditions of approval for a variance is that it not violate other elements of the code.
Okay.
And so that's what he's getting at, is that he reviewed it for all the other elements, the only thing that he found that it wasn't meeting was the height requirement and their type of variance. It's a nutshell that for you.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else on that, or do we, do you want to organize that, or can Jessica organize that for us to just carry on?
Okay. Okay, well, it sounds like we're going to have to go through and item by item. So.
You guys can certainly discuss these more once you have a motion and a second, and obviously they're open back up for discussion on that particular.
So, let's go through, I guess, trying to understand, figure out the language, what we got to kind of say here. So do we want to just do a kind of cursory deliberation on kind of the leanings?
So, I mean, the way I would do this, I'd go through and yea and nay all the variances, so, and then we can go through them there and there.
So, let's redefine them to, because I'm not necessarily.
So on the glazing, you guys, how are you all feeling on the glazing?
On the glazing?
I'm okay on the glazing.
Me too.
Yeah.
So I motion to approve the variances MR01-0, or 2025 and VAR022025, to cover all the glazing to be approved as written.
I signed that motion.
Okay. So, the next variance that needs to be discussed about.
We have to vote on.
We have to vote.
That's true.
Jessica, will you please call a vote for that?
I'd wear your head tie.
Push it forward, just get through this, model through it.
For Claire and Tish, that was VAR01 and 02?
Correct, dash 2020, 2025.
2025, okay. All right, Commissioner Ansel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Nailis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ricky?
Aye.
Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
Chairman Eagleair?
Aye.
Thank you, the vote passes for VAR01 and 02, dash 2025, 600.
So, variance number three, you guys, is for the offset plane, and I don't have an issue with that, because they've done that with siding, different materials to break up the plane. Granted, you can't have an offset in an auditorium wall or a gym wall, it doesn't.
Right, right, right.
So, yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Motion to approve VAR03, dash 2025.
Second.
Ms. Wirth, all the vote?
Commissioner Ansel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Nailis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ricky?
Aye.
Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
Chairman Eagleair?
Aye.
And the vote passes for variance 03, dash 2025, 600.
So how do we want to handle this?
The dreaded fourth one, you guys, which is the lighting. I mean, how do you guys all feel about the lighting situation?
I'm skeptical if what they have is true.
I'd like to see another report, official report, especially like you pointed out, there's some lights that aren't even showing on.
Right. The lights that I've called out, you guys, the three lights that I've called out, they're on the lighting plan, they are not called out in their lighting.
Analysis.
Analysis.
Right.
So I had no way to calculate those three lights into their lighting analysis, which I have not seen a photo cell overview of this project according to the lights that they have printed.
Right, so I think that needs to be redone.
So.
Ultimately, you have a couple of options there, right? You can approve, approve the variance with the condition that a photometrics plan that complies with city standards except for the approved variance, provided and approved by city staff, of course, or you could, I mean, that's, that's basically the way, if you want to do approval, you could basically ask for them to bring the lights down to 20 feet and say, hey, we're going to deny this variance, but I don't know that that assuages your concern about a photometrics plan, and so I think you still want to, when you go to a doct either way, the site's sign review, assuming that's what you guys are taking due, that, that you would just want to make sure you add that additional condition to provide a photometrics plan that's compliant with city standards. So either way, you're going to probably want to condition the photometrics plan so that we can make sure that all the lights are accounted for and that the flooding isn't occurring.
Right.
But then the question becomes, is 25 feet okay with you guys if, if the photometrics are compliant, or is 25 feet not okay with you guys?
So if they just lowered it to 20 feet, it would meet code and we, there wouldn't be the necessity to do that, right?
There would still be no variance, but I would highly recommend, now that I'm hearing that there's not a photometrics plan, that that be conditioned to be included, no matter what.
Right, yeah.
And they may, yeah, so, and it very happens provided to us, but we, you know, we'll have to see a photometrics plan either way, that's usually a standard condition, but I think we got the 1,500.
Yeah, I'm good with that, we're going to approve upon passing of the, the conditions with city's approval.
Are you saying 20 feet or 25?
Either way, as long, the main thing is it has to meet the conditions to, to follow the, the code, and if they can accomplish that at 25 feet, I'm okay. Obviously Clinton knows more about that stuff than I do, so if he's saying it can't work at 25.
So if he's saying it can't work at 25 feet, I'd be more inclined to agree with what he's saying, but I'd also like them to have the opportunity to show their work. It can be, but I can't say conclusively because those three lights aren't in that.
Right.
I don't have the specs for those three lights. Right. So those three lights could be, you know, 90... You know, I don't know what they are. Right. You know what I'm saying? 60 watts, yeah. I mean, so, they're not 60 watts, but... But, so, my motion, I motion to approve VAR04-2025 with a photometric plan that meets city standards.
For which?
For...
Either?
For 25-foot poles.
I second that motion.
I want the city to see a plan showing that it meets the standards, cuz I cannot find that plan anywhere in that bag. Got it. He seconded it, yep. We're good.
Did you make the motion?
Got a motion?
And I seconded it.
Okay. So call a vote.
Ready for a vote? Commissioner Ansel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
Commissioner Arnalis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ricky?
Aye.
Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
Chairman Eaglebaird?
Aye.
Thank you. The vote passes to approve VAR04-2025 with photometric plan that meets our code 600.
And now we're gonna need a motion.
We owe you a debt of gratitude for your expertise.
What's that?
We owe you a debt of gratitude. Just to say it again.
We still have to go through and do a motion to approve the original application.
Correct.
And so, we need a motion to approve SDR02-2025 with... Hang on.
And I'd just like to remind that that includes the condition about changing the timing of north-hazy lane improvements.
If anyone has any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yeah.
So, and that is just a land swap, so they don't have to take care of it right now. They can take care of it before they get the occupancy.
Yeah, so what it really boils down to, we already have a signed purchase and sale agreement between the school district and the city council. It's just we're going through the due diligence process to get all of that done, and that's gonna take a little bit longer than we're anticipating to be before building permit. So they'll either have to follow that through, which we're, you know, doing, I think everyone intends to do this doing, but it's just gonna take a little bit longer, cuz there's so much due diligence on a public property swap, and we have to go through and vacate hazy lane and do some things. So there's just a lot of moving parts that have to occur, but we already have a signed purchase and sale agreement. So we're just asking to move it to prior to occupancy to give enough time to complete that due diligence and make sure it's done, you know, prior to occupancy, but, you know, that way if it fails, then we can condition the activists to construct a...
So, another question I noticed, this is to staff, I was reading through the report. It said the demolition of the building had to be done before they got their building permit. I hope that's been changed.
Yeah, I noticed that, too.
That should certainly be prior to occupancy as well.
That should be prior to occupancy. It was labeled as demolished before building permit issued.
Yeah.
You might wanna change that.
I would recommend that you guys motion to modify both of those conditions of approval to move them prior to occupancy.
What was that?
It was...
It was right in the very beginning, I think.
One of the first seven or eight pages.
Yeah, it was early.
So, trust me, I've read about 800 of these pages, so...
That's it?
The rest are pictures. Those were the only ones that some of us read.
Those I read.
They weren't scratch and stuff. So...
Prior to construction or prior to...
I remember it was a little early in it.
I'm just trying to remember where it was.
I don't remember what page it was on.
It's okay, you guys can just say it.
Okay.
They don't have to find it.
So, so we need, it said...
I think it was in the body of the staff report and not the conditions, is that right?
I don't know, I don't remember where I read it. Somewhere.
I think it would be helpful just to have it in the conditions. So, you know, we can just change it in the conditions to say that.
Okay.
That'll cover it.
So, just remind me, so you said it said demolition before...
Building permit was issued.
Okay. So we need to change it to...
Occupancy.
Yeah, I mean, we could just add a condition prior to occupancy.
So, well... That might be kinda tricky, too, though, because, I mean, if they're gonna demolish during school year, they can't demolish before they get an occupancy. I think we need to, I don't think about that.
Yeah, and so I was actually gonna bring that up.
Oh, there it is.
I was holding my time. So, you know, ultimately, with timing provisions...
Seven.
We can modify the timing, we just can't modify without the planning commission what's happening. The thing has to happen. We can modify conditions with the mod, or the timing of a condition with a mod filing, and I anticipate that we're gonna be working closely with this.
Hand-in-hand with them, TNA.
I assume there's gonna be, you know, timing, and we all know how projects go, especially you, you know, you're gonna think it's gonna get done by this time, and then all of a sudden, it's gonna be six months later, and then we change everything. So, you know, like we do with all occupants, we'll work with them to make sure, but I think that pushes us out to our furthest trigger. If we go beyond that, we lose our trigger to make sure that happens.
Correct.
And once we stay within that, then when the time comes, if we're getting close, we can enter into some sort of a development agreement or do a modification of the timing provision to something, some other waypoint along the project that still exists, so we don't lose our triggering mechanism and ultimately, they don't have to return to school, although I don't anticipate they won't anymore. It's good to just make sure you're covered.
Who knows?
So, for the record, in the staff report provided, the commission, it's on page seven under site description. Says, paraphrasing, the existing Malala Middle School to be demolished prior to construction. So, we need to change that to not.
Yeah, just basically include a condition that is prior to occupancy, and then like I said, we'll certainly work with them.
Okay.
That's not attainable.
Yes, we're writing it down.
Dude, I... It's gonna be a mouthful, too. My head's... I'm repelling all day. You writing out the motion? You know, just hang with me, guys.
Sounds good.
Yeah, otherwise it'll make you do it.
Anything else, you guys? You guys ready?
Yeah.
Hit it. Motion to approve with modifications, modifications to the variances that we have approved previously, one through three being approved. Modification number four, to provide a light photocell plan, to approve SDR02-025 along with moving the land swap to the end before occupancy, and also changing the wordage on the demolition of the old building before occupancy. Second.
Jessica, you call a vote?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Ansel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
Commissioner Arnalis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ricky?
Aye.
Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
And Chairman Eaglebaird?
Aye.
Thank you. The vote for SDR02-2025 and variances and conditions that Commissioner Ansel stated passes 600.
Right, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Sorry, guys. We appreciate you, man.
We have a hand raised here.
For whatever it's worth, this was a really complex line with a whole bunch of moving parts, and so you guys did an excellent job of parsing it out, and you know, this is not an easy...
You're welcome.
It was a monster.
So, you guys did that to Clarissa on their first meeting here, too?
Hi, I'm Clint.
My first day and first meeting was a joint council and planning, and it was a hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, we remember, you really messed it up.
So tall.
All right, we gotta, we still gotta keep going here.
I'm sorry.
Slide dog.
There does not appear to be any general business, but staff communication on any updates or anything, so whoever would like to take that. Dan, got any updates?
Were you gonna introduce Clarissa, or should I, or should she?
All right.
I'm the associate planner, and we're psyched to have her. Clarissa Davis joined us right in the middle of last month, has jumped right into things, has done an awesome job getting integrated, just pumping out land use decisions. She, Oregon native, graduate of U of O Planning Department, and then here through a variety of initial stops with Eugene, a couple consulting firms that I can't bring to mind right now, and last city of Redmond, so we're really lucky to have her, psyched to have her around the office and...
Redmond to Malala? That's a reality shock. Just throwing that out there.
Wanna welcome her here and introduce her, and you'll get to know her real well over the next couple of years.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
Liking it so far?
Absolutely, lots of good experiences.
So, you're living in town now?
I have family in Portland, so I'm happy to meet you.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
It's what it is.
Yeah.
It's about the world.
Yeah. Well, cool, well, welcome, I'm sure we'll see you around, so...
Thank you.
Park is open.
Park is open?
Y'all, 'cause the park is open now.
Yeah, I got a question on that. I've been there a couple times.
How's the lighting? You're on fire tonight. I mean, the Havanna are jerky.
So, why is the logging road not open at Oliver to get in there?
It's gonna be, that's our next, we've got the engineers looking at, look at what the minimum we have to do to open that thing up.
Open the gates?
Yeah.
Pretty much, come on.
There's some things that we have, cuz like, we wanna lower the speed limit because it's a little bit narrow and there's kinda those huge drop-offs, and we have to apply to ODOT to lower our own speed limits, I guess, so like there's...
Can't you just put us 15 mile an hour, sign up and call it a day?
Unfortunately, no.
We have to follow code.
I would like...
Since when?
Can a resident of town put up a 15 mile an hour speed limit?
But actually, I mean, is it really technically a highway if it's an entrance to a park?
It's not a highway. To lower the speed limit below 25 anywhere, you have to go through ODOT.
Even on a private parking lot road?
I was as surprised as you are.
Wow. I'm just trying to like, I mean, because I, like, trying to get through Bear Creek is not fun, and I don't feel for those neighbors and people who live in that development to put up with that traffic, so...
Yeah, we're...
You come walk from my house there and we'll see who gets there first.
We are literally in the middle of a feasibility study to do the minimum necessary to open that.
So open the gates in the meantime, till the study's done.
I mean, you know, I know you live out of town, but the owners of this city probably don't wanna get sued for that, so...
We all pay for it eventually. That's all, I just had questions, you know, but I mean, the kids love it. I mean, so, it is cool. So we're still looking for the little creatures, still a little bit of them.
The what, the little creatures?
Yeah.
At least you knew what the game was.
They, yeah.
They're hidden, and we hit them. I know where all of them are. You don't think like the picture.
Well, I've got some other kinda interesting and fun updates.
Yeah.
The, we were, Seth and I went to IFA, Infrastructure Finance Authority, two weeks ago, and got $4.65 million to build a water intake that's full-funded.
Nice.
Unfortunately, it's a loan, but it's great terms, cuz it's through the IFA, but we're also looking to offset that cost with $2 million from the feds that is working through committee, and hopefully we make it out of committee. I don't really know how the feds work, it's kind of as well, it goes through your legislator, and then they put it in whatever committee, and then that committee has to approve it, and then it goes into some funding.
Which isn't gonna happen while we're shut down, right?
Right, I'm guessing there's delay on that as well. So we're hoping we make it out of committee and we can basically build that intake for $2.65 million, which would be, with the financing terms we have on that money, it would be just a pittance of a dent in the bill, it wouldn't be a big change.
Well, we got those eight-foot pipes from Dan, we could just use some of those. Could really just get that water flowing.
I mean... We might have to upsize that one.
It's gonna need a big pump.
New York City. So that one's done, and then we start, on Friday, we have the kickoff meeting for the ASR study, that's the aquifer storage and recovery. So basically, that would provide us with a secondary water source that during the, you know, winter, we've got more water rights than we need, and more waters running through the river than, you know, we need, we can take and pump into that ASR, assuming that we have one that's feasible, and then we're allowed to pull out 90% of what we've pumped in at any time. So it basically becomes a giant storage tank, but it also kind of replenishes groundwater, which is a good thing for everyone.
Oh, yeah.
So it's kinda neat, and there's a lot of funds out there because it does that. So this ASR study, actually, we got two grants, so this is fully grant-funded, so that's kinda neat, you know, to have that stuff going. We also have the PFAS feasibility investigation that is finishing up, that's a grant-funded project as well, cuz as you guys know, we had one positive test amongst dozens for one of the, one of the 40 or however many PFAS chemicals there are, 11 parts per trillion. But what that did is qualify us for all these grants and all these different things, and of course PFAS is everywhere, cuz it just is plastic, right? And especially with how prone, you know, outside of our area is to fire, a lot of those fire retardant chemicals have it in there as well. So it would be who of us to get a system put in place that can filter PFAS? They're still looking at what those are, I mean, I don't think everyone's kinda figured it out entirely yet, but they're working on it. So we've got a settlement that we were able to be a part of because of that one positive test, and so we've been getting incremental payments, and we're rat-holing that for this feasibility study that we're doing under a grant to see what they recommend, and hopefully we have enough with that settlement to go ahead and build what they're recommending, if not, we're hoping it's not astronomical, I don't think it's gonna be, but we'll augment that with some water funds if needed. So waters move along well, of course wastewater's flying, that project's looking really good. I don't know if you guys have gone out there and looked at it?
Wastewater's flying?
Yeah. I'll let Sam tell you about the South Mall Lift Station and Lola Project, but those are just some of the big ones, and they're, and then the police facility, actually, it got put in for occupancy, and the only thing that they have outstanding for occupancy is they basically just have to program the fire system. And so they're gonna be working on that, and they'll have occupancy at the new police facility, so...
And then there'll be a grand opening, that's all.
Absolutely. So, I'm trying to think, is there anything else I'm missing?
I mean, there's North Malala Crosswalk as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's one more thing I did, that I did forget. The Fox Park, Todd Park there, now that we're working through this land swap, everyone feels a little bit more comfortable, we're doing some more improvements out there, so we're adding like those, like, I don't want to call them like the spring ponies. Those are going back into the Todd area, cuz by popular demand.
We know who likes it, yeah.
Why do you think there's one right outside his office?
We need a couple more of those out here.
We gotta do something to slip off stress.
Come on, Dan, let's go.
But yeah, so we're getting those back, put back in, that should be next week.
Nice.
Strawberry Park is set to reopen either Friday or Monday, we're just waiting to see how the curing goes of that. Strawberry Park is set to reopen either Friday or Monday, we remain to see how the curing goes of that.
Texture and surface.
Check it out to make sure, but that's all, that's all done and squared away now, too, so.
So, I have a curiosity question.
Oh, and Law Park will open as well, sorry.
What, what's going to happen to the part of City Hall that the police department occupies now when they move?
Good question. We're going back in there.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll move, we'll move in there, and then this, um, they're looking at moving the library over here, but not into this building, the libraries, you know, a library comes from county fund, it's a different funding source, so it's like, I was thinking, they've been saving up money for capital, and we think we've got real close to enough to, to put a library in over here, so this would become a library facility, and then, of course, the chamber, and the court and all that should be all kind of one wrapped in facility here.
Oh, okay.
And I don't think they have to add, I, I haven't seen, Sam, I've seen the design, there's like a preliminary, we're going out for design, actual design work, but the preliminary, I think, was spec'd at like fifteen hundred additional feet or something, not, not that big, two thousand additional square feet.
Yeah, just a little bit of portion out on the parking lot of the entrance area there, so, yeah, somewhere around like eighteen, two thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Added on to it.
So, what are they going to do with the old library?
That's, that's, uh, the school district.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue, it's, the city doesn't own the land it's on.
That's right.
Yeah, and the, kind of the, I think some of the discussions about lease extensions and things that were, you know, intended to be like one year lease extensions, as a public entity, you really can't function under that. You know, most public entities, when there's a lease that goes on, I mean, it's fifty or a hundred years. I think we did end up giving it up to twenty-five or, or more years on this last one, but it wasn't without some heartache. And so, everyone was kind of concerned that, hey, we don't want to go back down that road, and we had been already looking at, um, library options, and that's why the libraries would save the capital for like five or six years in order to be able to have that, that seed money to get the, the project done, so, that's what will happen.
Okay, that will keep us out of trouble about cutting trees down, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so they just got.
Yeah, just old ones.
We cut a couple more down today, but it was on the mark. Those were dead.
Got to make room for those twenty-five foot lights going, right? Twenty-five foot lights, yeah.
So, yeah, that's mine, um, as always, if you guys ever have questions on stuff, you know where to find me.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
Chat with you anytime.
Yeah, and then, as Matt kind of mentioned, the South Malala Pump Station is getting, it's almost in, actually, pretty much a hundred percent designed. Um, we're doing an IGA with the county and coordinating with the county as well on doing that project, so, there's a little bit of donation of, uh, right of way that's going to need to be taken place as well, that we're working on, and, um, yeah, hopefully, uh, that project gets wrapped, not wrapped up, but that project starts. Uh, I'm going to go out to bid probably around December, uh, January, and they anticipate start date is going to be, uh, springtime, so, two thousand twenty-six. That includes the new culvert, um, the culvert actually is going to cover the full right of way, so we don't have to worry about going back in there and extending it, once we take over the, the land portion of that or the right of way from the county. It'll be fully built out, and that way we can just put sidewalk or whenever new development comes in, so. It's kind of a good one there, and then Lola, um, pretty much wrapping that one up, actually, we just got done paving, um, today. Um, they're going to be doing a little bit of shoulder work, and that project's actually just going to be wrapping up this week, so.
No curbs on that project?
No curbs, no curbs, no gutter, and no sidewalks.
So, there's a rule about curbs, it's kind of interesting. If you put in curbs.
You got to put in sidewalks.
You have to provide ADA evidence.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, it basically results in any street that's underdeveloped without sidewalk, if it's, you know, the whole street, we're not going to put it on there until.
Because there was no curbs or sidewalks there before, so technically, we just removed and replaced.
Yep.
So, we don't have to bring it up to standards, we removed and replaced.
Exactly.
I was, I was just picking up my girl from soccer, and it's like, oh.
Oh, yeah. Well, I went from a single lane to a two lanes, too.
Yeah, but it still was remove and replace, though.
Yeah.
There was no improvement.
Because, yeah, we have to like, it's, it's kind of wild, it's like you can't fix a street that's terrible unless you, you know, and it bumps up the amount of money you have to spend. It's, it's, the intention is good, it's meant to provide, come in the period ADA, but like Lola and most of those streets with hard compressed shoulder gravel, I mean, folks can go down those.
They've been down that forty years.
Yeah, exactly.
Fifty years, whatever those reading, whatever.
Kind of part of the shift in our, in our programming with street surfacing, that's why we were able to get so much, comparatively speaking, two years by gone, so much done on the street, because we said, hey, not every street has to be rebuilt to the, you know, to the, the.
Current standards.
Let's just make the travel lanes nice on these things, that's what so many other cities do that have really successful surfacing programs. You can't build the Taj Mahal on every one, or you're trying to do one street a year.
Yeah.
You know, if that.
All right, props to the city for getting as much street work as they've done this year, you know? So, except for, I hope they don't dig up the new asphalt over by the school to put in a crosswalk. That would have been poor planning.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, this is on, on North Mall, North Mall.
Yeah, so, the ADA ramp over there on North Mall Avenue and Francis is basically, is going to get redone and put, uh, an RFP in there as well, Fleech, uh, Flashing Beacon.
Gotcha.
Uh, that project is going to, is actually on its way, and it's been approved. Uh, the contractor's mobbing out as, as we speak, probably, so, um, this week and starting next week. There will be a little bit of tearing up the, the grinding inlet, but they're actually doing a, a full build out of the street section of it, so it won't be a patch piece fill-in, it'll be actually redone, um, full constructed redone, where they disturb, so.
That one was interesting, too. We got into that and found out that the city didn't have any of the right of way on the ends of the side, of the crosswalk, that was also going into someone's driveway. So, luckily, those neighbors were super nice to work with, and we're like, yeah, you guys, yeah, just do what you need to do, just make sure I still got my driveway and stuff, you know, and, uh, we'll donate what we need to donate, you know, so they.
That's most people, though, really, if you think about it.
I agree, but, yeah, it's something you just holding your breath when stuff like that happens, it's like, oh, man, here's this crosswalk that people have been kind of, kind of ticked off that is not there for good reasons, but we're putting in an enhanced crosswalk, so, you know, we're trying to make it better and safer. But then to find out that, uh-oh, we were going to deliver this project before the school year, except for that we don't on the right of way, so now we got all the, all the, we got it, so it was, you know, kind of delayed.
Yeah, the existing sidewalk, actually, a portion of the existing sidewalk, sidewalk was actually on private property, so.
Yeah, it was a little bit.
So, yeah.
Gotcha.
And then you guys probably noticed as well, the, the Klima, not Klima Apartments, be the, um, Bear Creek Apartments, they finally almost finished up with their furniture improvements along the highway there, so it's actually starting to look really nice, so.
Space age is in.
Yeah, space age is in.
I'm just surprised the apartments have taken as long as they have, and they were in such a big push to get Phase Two done, and then they sat there.
Amazing, huh?
Sat there. It's money. Free up and waiting, government money, they were waiting for their next paycheck. Who knows, I'm just saying. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Sam. I didn't think I was going to hear Sam talk tonight, just sitting over there, just like, what do I do?
Using his breath waiting for it.
Well, I honestly thought the applicant was going to address more than, than what they just do in their, their, um, speech or their presentation, basically, um, but, yeah.
I had your back, don't worry about it.
Halloween's coming. The Chambers, of course, organizing, trying to get all the downtown businesses to participate, and the people who don't have businesses downtown can, you know, get a spot on a sidewalk along different, up in front of other stores. The Masonic Lodge always is open and has public restrooms, coffee, and hot chocolate and goodies, so, you know, lots of people, when they got their kids up, they need the restrooms, and, um, I see there was, somebody else was doing something special. Trying to think who it was. Ingrid, um, Cindy's Cafe will be open that night, too, and she wants to make sure people know that she's participating. Because she's not usually open in the evenings, and since it's a Friday night, she's going to be open.
We'll, uh, we'll have, we'll have Jessica in touch with, with you guys', the Chambers', um, person, so that we can put it out. We can either repost what you do, or we can post something so that everyone, you know, knows Cindy's is open and her restroom's over here and that sort of stuff. Trying to help out, getting the word out. Did you also, did you, just as an aside, did you, um, hear that PGE reached out and offered a thousand dollars to donate towards the Christmas tree lighting?
Yes, they gave us, uh, the Chamber a thousand dollars towards the Christmas tree lighting and the Christmas parade.
Nice.
Well, and our Christmas parade had kind of fallen apart, so we have to reorganize, because the fire department had not wanted us to be a part of it, them, this year, for the fire, you know, for the food cans, because we did our parade with them. So, we, we have a meeting tomorrow night, we're figuring, going to figure this out, because we got to get our permit in and get it approved. But, yeah, and then the, the lights on the trees, I don't know if anybody noticed it, they all have been off and down, and there's been some growth problems with some of the trees, overgrew, popped their cords and broke the lights, and so, the lights came down, and we renegotiated a new contract, and so, um, the lights will be going, or most of them, I think, are back up, because he was working on it this weekend. And then, so they'll be, now they'll go from, um, middle of October till into January, and then we'll take them off the trees during the growth time, so we won't have them, unfortunately, through the spring and summer, but it's the smartest way to do it for the trees.
Yeah, makes sense. And it's light out twelve, fourteen hours a day during the summer.
Yeah, it's just they look so pretty at night, but, yeah.
They look awesome.
At least they'll be, for Halloween, for trick or treating, it'll be well lit again, and then for Christmas and stuff, it'll be good. That's all I got.
All right. Well, I don't have much, other than, um, I do have the reminder to the account, commission for our joint session on the nineteenth of November. So, this is a reminder, friendly reminder.
And then, so there wouldn't be the first.
Should be emailed.
So, yeah, there's no, there will be a meeting on the fifth.
Yeah, no meeting on the fifth, meeting, joint meeting on the nineteenth.
Got it, yeah, it's in my calendar, okay.
Okay.
Cool.
I mean, she's made it a year. Jessica, the year.
I've asked you about a year and a half.
Year and a half? Do you have anything?
I got nothing.
Uh, we got, uh, full-size candy bars at the Ricky House this year, to come down Tolliver Drive. I bought about three hundred bars from Costco, um, we've only eaten about twenty percent of them so far. I, I ordered more.
All right.
So, there should be plenty.
If you live in a smaller town, you can buy as many candy bars.
Yeah, well, you know, that's if you don't want extras, you know?
They're all in the freezer, and they still eat.
Yeah.
Yes, they do.
Just saying.
I know, but I know.
I'd rather, you know, have more than enough than not enough, that's my philosophy.
You don't want to get egg.
Exactly.
Can I break them in half when you have that, like?
That sounds sanitarian safe.
That's how you get the razor blade, too.
You have anything? Nothing for me, other than that, every time I happen to look at some of the nonsense going on in Portland, I'm so grateful I live here and we're not run by the democratic socialists. Yeah, okay. All right, well, is there anything else for the good of the order? No, I adjourn this meeting at eight oh seven PM.